Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 9th, 2020. I can't believe it's 2020. Board Conference and Business Meeting of the School District of Havreford Township. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Here.
Mr. Sinta?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Here. Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the December 19th, 2019 Regular Public Board Meeting.
Move.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. No one has signed up in advance to speak in public session tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak now? Next item is our reports from our students this evening. We have middle school report by Reese Wagner and high school report by Erica Borby.
Hello, my name is Reese Wagner and I'm the middle school representative. Thank you for allowing me to present. We wish everyone a happy 2020 and we welcome the new board members and thank all of you for the work that you do. Our winter sports teams have been all active this week and all of our teams are setting winning records and at this point in the season are enjoying competition and sportsmanship. Our eighth grade sports teams are also gearing up for Potter Cup. Potter Cup is scheduled for Friday, January 24th at the Havreford High School. We are fundraising for pediatric cancer through the Alex's Lemonade Stand. The Young Minds Change Lives Club is working with our food services department to reduce the amount of plastic we use in our cafeteria. They have removed straws and the small plastic cups used for condiments in the cafeteria. Our school annual geography bee, which is designed to recognize students who are inspired and curious about the world, is scheduled tomorrow. Ms. Klaus will chair the event and we look forward to seeing who this year's winner is. Our school and the PTO will be holding a social event for new families to our school, joining our school on Tuesday, January 14th at 6:00 PM. New families are invited to meet with members of the school community to socialize and get to know each other. We will have an open gym for the kids, food and good conversation. We will have a wellness day on Friday, January 17th. The focus of our wellness day will be on self-care. We are looking forward to gaining awareness about the need for self-care and engaging in some self-care activities. There will be a parent preview on the information being covered on January 14th at 7:30. Thank you for allowing me to present.
Thank you.
Good evening, staff, community and members of the board. It is my pleasure to be delivering the first ever report of the New Year. First and foremost, January is School Director Recognition Month and I would like to take this time on behalf of all the students at Havreford High School to acknowledge and show appreciation to all members of the school board for their commendable and tireless effort into making our schools a better place. School board directors put in hours of hard work behind the scenes in order for us students to reap the wonderful benefits offered at HHS. Once again, thank you to all members of the board for your dedicated work to our school and our community. Speaking of Havreford High School, the Fords started off 2020 strong after a relaxing and much-needed winter break. The Fords' Ice Hockey All-Stars beat the Chestnut All-Stars on New Year's Day in an All-Star game and remained undefeated in the Central League with a record of 11 to 0. Ford's Wrestling beat Lower Marion yesterday, January 8th, with a score of 39 to 33. On Friday, January 24th, the Boys and Girls Varsity Basketball Team is participating in the Hope Classic benefiting the Angelman Syndrome Foundation and the Foundation of Angelman Syndrome Therapeutics. Spring Track Sports already training in preparation for their season with informational meetings being held for the baseball team and boys tennis team. The high school choral concert performed at the Ardmore Presbyterian Church on Sunday, January 5th. It was a wonderful concert under first-year choir director, Ms. Handler. The high school band will be hosting a jazz winter concert at Havreford High School on Wednesday, January 15th. Keystone testing will begin next week with literature and Algebra I keystones on the 13th and 14th and biology keystones on the 15th and 16th. The semester is rapidly approaching its end and many students are gearing up towards finals week, taking place Wednesday, January 22nd and Thursday, January 23rd. There is a back-to-school night on Monday, January 27th for all parents interested in their students' new classes for the second semester. Our club and fashion club are meeting every Tuesday from 2:30 to 3:45 and guitar club is meeting every Wednesday from 2:30 to 3:30. As always, the writing center is open to students after school every Wednesday in the library from 2:30 to 3:30 and the math center is open every Tuesday and Thursday from 2:30 to 3:30 in room 337. As you can see, the Fords are kicking into high gear with 2020 vision. I am looking forward to updating you all on new events in the upcoming week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Our next agenda item, recognition of school board members. Dr. Ruscie?
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. As both of our students indicated, January is a month where we recognize and show appreciation to our school board members for all the work that they do. These are unpaid positions that encompass many more than the two Thursday evenings a month when the public sees the board here meeting. Just this evening, we talked about gearing up a series of meetings for those who serve as facility liaisons to this board to look at some of our facility projects that we have yet to put shovel to ground and get moving with some. So there's a substantive amount of work that these folks do behind the scenes in preparation for the meetings that they come to each and every week, in addition to the other committees and groups that they serve on. So on behalf of the students, my fellow administrators and teachers across the district, we want to thank you for your dedication to public education and in particular to your dedication to the children of the School District of Havreford Township. We also want to thank your families because it is your families who are without you on the times that you are here spending these glorious hours with us. So again, we appreciate all that you do for us and thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Ruscie. Our next agenda item is curriculum update for math audit, social studies development, science implementation. So Ms. Saxa, Dr. Nesbit and Ms. Connelly.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Good evening, Dr. Ruscie, members of the board, administrators and members of our public. It is our pleasure this evening to bring to you a curriculum update. We typically come sometime in the winter months to share the work that has been done thus far as part of our audit process. And just so I get a chance like every couple of months to show everyone this graphic because this is my favorite one, this is just a snippet of our curriculum cycle. So this is a cycle that ensures that each subject area gets reviewed at least once every five years and we determine whether or not any changes should be made to the curriculum based on how it aligns with the standards that are out there, how it aligns with national trends, what the research says, and how well it's serving our students. So this year, as you can see by the red arrow, we are in the audit process for both math and world language. And then we also pull down, we have still some K-12 health and physical education auditing that is occurring this year as well. And so Dr. Nesbit is going to spend the majority of our presentation time sharing some results from the math audit. And then we will also be sharing some information about world language, health and physical education, and an update to English Language Arts. Before we do that, though, Dr. Nesbit also has some exciting news about a grant for which we've applied.
Good evening. Happy School Board Month as well. Again, thank you for all that you do for the service of our kids. Yes, it's part of the science audit. We made many different connections with professors from around the area. And also, I came to last year and talked about a $35,000 grant that we got from the state of Pennsylvania to help with computer science and we're teaching robots to fourth graders this year in all of our libraries. And somewhere in the summer, one of the professors from Villanova reached out to me and said, "Hey, Dr. Nesbit, the state has a much larger grant. Are you interested in working with us to put forward a larger grant?" So myself and a woman by the name of Dr. Lisa Marco Bujoja and a engineering professor by the name of Dr. Jackie Huang and then also Dr. Thomas Chevsky and I got together several times to sort of brainstorm and think about ideas. And ultimately, we put together a grant where we are hoping that we can work in collaboration with the education professor, the engineering professor and our teachers to design a unit for our ninth graders that would be done in the engineering classes, which is essentially making fuel cells out of mud. And it's an aerobic reaction that occurs within the mud that you can actually measure with a volt meter. The engineering professor has done this for many years at a research level and we're hoping to turn it into like a three-week unit that we can do in our classes. So we applied for a significant amount of funding from the state. The grant was submitted today. The deadline is tomorrow. It was about, you know, 10-page grant at least that we worked on collaboratively. We're all very excited about it and now it's just kind of a wait and see whether the state thinks it's as exciting as we do.
Good luck.
So, thank you. Fingers crossed. So the math audit, we began in the fall of this year and we are doing a math audit K through 12. And so the team is quite comprehensive. This is the elementary team, which are all the representatives that come to all of my math meetings and as well as all the building principals and myself and Jen and our math coaches all work together to review the math data. We then also have the entire middle school math faculty, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Donegey, and the entire high school math faculty as well. Again, all looking at how is our present curriculum aligned, what's the data look like, creating surveys, sending surveys out, looking at the information from the surveys. Today's just, it's a long presentation, but it's a brief summary of all of that information. There's no way to present all of that information at a meeting like this. So this is kind of a description of what happens. You know, first, there's a lot of looking at the standards, looking at what does the national organization say you should be looking at, and then you really start looking at it. You start looking at how your curriculum lines up with the standards. You ask the teachers some information from surveys and then you also survey students and parents at the middle and high school level and parents at the elementary level. And we look at all of that information. NCTM has put on a lot of information out. We've been in a Common Core, a Common Standards for a long time now. Interestingly, both in math and science, there's been a push towards not only the Common Core content standards, but also the practice standards. When we went through the science audit, I talked a lot about the doing of science. Mathematicians, believe it or not, are in the exact same position where they're pushing back and saying the doing of math is just, if not more, but equally as important as the math content standards. And there are eight standards for mathematical practice. I'm not going to read all of them, but things like modeling with mathematics, when we're asking students to draw pictures, when we're asking students to visualize the problem, we're trying to reinforce the fact that, you know, it's not just about 3 plus 4, that complex mathematicians, they have to show images, they have to show models because it gets beyond those basic numbers. So it's a really important thing to be able to model with mathematics, using tools strategically. That means when should you use a calculator, when should you not use a calculator, when should you use a computer, when should you use a graphing calculator? All of those things are part of those standards. And also other things like making sense of problems and persevering through them. No matter how good of a mathematician you are, you're going to find a problem that you can't solve immediately, no matter what level you're on. And so do you have the perseverance and are you being trained to persevere through problems so that when you're confronted with a challenging problem, you continue to persevere through it? So these are things that we are looking for and making sure that they're also important in our curriculum. When we looked at the content standards, this is, you know, just an example of a very simple round two and three-digit whole numbers to the nearest 100 respectively. Basically, we create a gigantic Excel spreadsheet for every grade, basically say, "These are the content standards. Are they taught explicitly in your book? Are you supplementing it with something else?" Or is it a gap? Is it something that, you know, exists that we haven't done? And we go through all the grades that way. And we then graph what are the results from that. And this is just an example. In third grade, about 75% of the contents was covered directly from the book and an about additional 25% needed to be done with supplemental instruction. And that's just the way it is. There's no perfect book, there's no perfect program that lines absolutely with the PA Core. It is, you know, you want to get as close alignment as possible and that's what we're looking for. As we look at new programs, how can we get better alignment? But we recognize that there may never be a perfect alignment.
Were these assessments based on books that were published prior to the Common Core?
They were published right about the same time as the Common Core. So our copyrighted books are about 2013. The Common Core was right around then, a little bit before that, but that was, that is a challenge with them.
Were stickers slapped on them or was it, they just kind of came out concurrently so they weren't really in communication with each other?
Pretty much that, yes. Yep.
So this is basically telling us then what the difference is between the Common Core and old standards in terms of perhaps what the supplemental.
Yes.
Was that 26.7%? Like that's the additional content.
Correct. That we've, yep. So general findings, I showed just third grade and seventh grade. Like I said, we did that K through 12 or K through Algebra II. Approximately 75 to 85% of the content standards are able to be caught using our primary resources. The standards of mathematical practice have been a focus from our coaches but are not highlighted in our present resources. Again, what I talked about with the next generation science standards and I'm talking about with math here is that when Common Core was adopted, there was such a focus on the content, there wasn't as much of a focus on the practice. And both in science and math, newer resources are now highlighting the NGSS standards that talks about how you learn science and they're also highlighting the math practice standards that talks about how you learn math. So we are looking at that. Our special education teachers are able to cover about 30 to 50% of the content standards and this is a common challenge that all of, across the county, across the state, the challenge of how much you need to cover with the expected content versus the pace that you have to cover it within. Our middle school and high school books were purchased as paperback books and are also kind of in need of replacement as a result of, the publisher at that time made them as paper books. The same publisher's newest versions are all hardbacks, but they are several years old as well and they just are in need of replacement. So we sent out surveys. I created rough draft of surveys, then shared them with the elementary principals and teachers, middle school surveys, shared them with the middle school principals and teachers, high school surveys, high school principals and teachers. And we revised, edited, changed until we were happy with our surveys and then we sent the surveys out. We had about 500 parents from the elementary level respond, about 250 middle school parents, almost 1,500 middle school students responded. So those teachers and principals, they really, they were on top of this survey, really wanted to see how the kids responded. About 150 high school parents and guardians responded and about 700 high school students responded. And again, it was just an email that was sent out to the high school students like, "Hey, this is a math survey, tell us what you think." And the same thing to those parents. At the middle school, the teachers definitely talked it up and said, "Hey, make sure you wanted to do this," which was great because we really wanted to make sure we had a, we wanted to make sure we had a diverse and a large participation.
That middle school principal is a little competitive?
He is a little bit.
Little bit?
Yeah. He got a gold star. So again, each of those surveys had 15 to 20 questions on them and we got results from all of them. I've picked out various questions that are somewhat representative of what we saw. How confident do you feel about your child taking math at the next grade or in the middle school? Generally, our parents were very confident about their kids being prepared for either the next grade or the middle school. These numbers down here are not the grades. This is zero means they're not very confident and five means they're very confident that their child is well-prepared for the next grade. So approximately 50 and 30, 80%, almost 80% of our parents are saying with a four or five certainty, they're prepared for the next, next grade or next level. Rate the following, the math content, the homework and the assessments. Appropriately challenging is the red bar. And the first one is math content, the second one is homework and the third one is assessments. And what we noticed about this was that the, generally, not challenging enough, the orange bar, the red was the good one. So that means people were right on, you know, and that was the biggest one. Everybody's very happy with the red. The interesting thing when we got this back was that both math content, homework and assessments, there are more parents who think it could be a little more challenging than parents who think it's too challenging. So the orange bar says it could be a little more challenging and the blue bar says it's too much. So we were happy that, you know, if we look at this, we need to be a little more rigorous and not a little less rigorous. But by and large, everybody thinks it's right at the right spot. This was middle school parents. Again, it's almost identical. It's slightly more, it's actually slightly more than 80%. The far right one was 52% and the four was 29%. So again, lots of our parents feel as though their children are prepared for math at the next grade or level. Do you find what's being learned in math class interesting? This is of 1,500 middle school students. We would certainly like it to be a little bit higher, but a large majority are saying threes, fours and fives, math class is interesting. And so, you know, generally, if you go out to a dinner party and I tell someone I'm a STEM coordinator, they love to hear me talking about drones, but as soon as I start talking about math, they're not as interested. So if you're middle school students, if we've got a high percentage of them still finding interest in math, that's good. That's what we really want. We want as many as possible to continue loving math. And then this is a look back. This is, this is the same thing as those other questions. Do you feel your child's prepared for the next level? This was, okay, now your kid's in high school. Did the math classes at the middle school prepare you for it? And again, astounding 80% said absolutely. High school students? Again, this was 700 high school students that responded to this survey, almost half of the high school students. And red is the good bar. And almost 600 of those 700 students were saying that the content, the homework and the assessments are at the right level. And the sort of same was apparent here except for assessments. Both math content and math homework, math homework is almost a tie between was it not challenging enough or too challenging? Assessments, there are definitely some that think they might be a little bit too challenging and there really aren't any that are saying they're not challenging enough. Very, very, very few.
Was there any place for narrative responses in the survey to sort of explain why they gave a certain, you know, score to some of these things?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. So almost every section of it had open feedback and comments. And again, we read all of those comments. It's just difficult to summarize that type of information in this type of a presentation. But yes, there were lots of opportunities for them to also respond their thoughts.
And so they were sort of varied? There wasn't an overarching theme of the narrative responses?
No, they were mostly pretty varied, yeah. And what, what we found when we do these surveys is that, so at the high school, most of the students are not going to write too much. The parents, we had 150 parents participate and of the 150 parents, you're only going to get maybe 50 that are going to choose to write a comment. It might even only be 20 or 25. And they tend to be polar opposites. We absolutely love or we absolutely don't love. And we look at them and read them and take that as feedback, but it is, you get a smaller and smaller and smaller percentage to participate with having to write something other than clicking a box. And they tend to be at the extremes. And literally, you'll read one comment that says, "We absolutely love this part of the program" and the next or the third or the fifth one after that says the exact same opposite of that one. So you have to just kind of filter through it. It's very rare that you find a common theme that says, "This is what's right or this is what's wrong."
Going back to the survey design, what was the decision around choosing a five-point Likert scale versus a four-point where you have like?
A bad one, looking back on it. It just was a decision that we made and it's funny because I've, we've used, we've used the same style of survey for all of our audits. And this one, when I got the results, I said to the math department, "Why didn't anybody say we should have done four?" Like you saw everybody that looked at it and then we got a number of threes and, and it's like, well, where are these people on the fence? Are they, so it will go to a four-point the next time. It was something that I reflected on too. So this data was actually presented at an October meeting and again, it was a much larger thing, but this is just a, we looked at this and we looked at this as much as possible. We also really look at curriculum-based assessments as well. It's really hard to share curriculum-based assessments and what it tells us at a public meeting like this as well. But in just today's elementary principals meeting, we were looking at curriculum-based assessments. So, and we are always concerned as how well are kids doing on our, on our tests as well because we want to see kids being successful regularly on our own test. And then we also want to see how does that line up with the state. So grades three, four and five, again, as you've seen before, relative to the state, are all doing pretty well. This is grades three, four. This is grade five and the middle school. One of the things that we really do notice here is that building to building, it is different. I'm constantly talking both about curriculum data and state data that we want to narrow the differences between buildings in both curriculum and, and state data. So that's something that we're really looking at. And one of the challenges with having 25% of your curriculum supplemented is that that supplemental part can become hard to systematize in five different buildings, how that's taught. So that's definitely part of this. When you look at the middle school, if 25% isn't, is supplemented, all four teachers are in the same room and they work as a team and they agree as a team what they're going to supplement. And so it's not a dissimilar experience. I do think that's part of the dissimilar experience that some of our elementary schools have and that's something that we're going to look at as we move forward.
Can I address one quick thing about historically underperforming populations in these numbers, which they aren't there now? Previous boards, we've looked at those numbers and there was sort of a shift towards engagement, getting more kids more involved. Will we see some more numbers around our historically underperforming test takers in years to come or soon?
Yes, that's one of the items that we are planning on presenting at a future board meeting is a little bit more detail about how our subgroups have performed. Just to note, in that particular subgroup, the historically underperforming includes students who have IEPs, students who are identified as English learners, as well as the, those who typically perform in the bottom 33%. So when we are looking at what is a good math curriculum, we are looking for, is there a math curriculum that has a special education component? Is there a math curriculum that has ideas for teachers on the sidebar to how do you work with an English learner with this kind of concept here? So it is something that comes into account as we're making our selections for resources.
Thank you, Jen. I'm confident that this is work we're doing. It's important the community sees that work in these types of presentations as well when they're ready.
Thank you.
We've also looked at how we're doing on the SATs and the five-year trend. And again, this was presented already, but the five-year trend is that the average score in math continues to go up. And it's really gone up significantly. We've looked at, you know, the Keystone Algebra. And what this graph is showing is, is all of the middle school and high schools that give Keystone high towards the that give Keystone, uh, high, towards the top of this is your achievement, and towards the right of this is your growth. So you, you know, you want to be in the upper-right quadrant. And you can see at the middle school, both the achievement and the growth is very positive. They are nearly the top, is certainly one of the top four on this graph. There's one way up there, uh, and then there's a line of three or four, and Haverford Middle School's right on that line. And that's our accelerated eighth-grade students, and they're showing positive growth. So if you look at the, the middle line, I don't know if my laser's gonna work here. There we go. So this, this line right here is neutral growth. Anything over here is positive growth. So the middle school has positive growth and one of the highest achievements. Uh, Haverford High School, uh, has, I think, there's only one school that has more growth than Haverford High School. Um, and I spoke, it was State College, and, and they also have a year-long Algebra I course, um, in, you know, nobody else is seeing the growth that we're seeing with our students. So, um, and again, it's also very positive achievement. So it's a very, that's a really positive data point to look at.
And just a note, sort of, you see how the, the graph is divided almost in two sections? That upper section is composed primarily of middle schools, where students are taking this in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, depending on the middle school. And the, the lower section is the high school. And if you look at where we are in relation to the other high schools, we are also not only at the high growth, but we are also at the higher end of achievement of that particular group.
Yeah, it's almost like it's, you see two circles up there, kind of. The one circle is more the middle school, and then the other circle is more the high So our general findings, um, generally, parents and guardians and students feel they're prepared for math at the next level, and that the math instruction assessment's at the right level. There are more parents and guardians and students who feel math could be a little more challenging than those who feel it's too easy. Uh, math achievement and growth in grades six through 12 are significantly above state averages, and grades three, and four, and five are generally above state averages, but we would like to see more parity between those schools.
Um, I have a question about the, um, the parent and guardian view of things. Looking back, my kids are in middle school and high school now, but elementary math was so different for me than how I learned math. I like, I had to look up several times, like, online, how to, how to do subtraction, the way they were doing it. I'm like, I can't believe I have to do this. Um, is that something that came out in the survey? Like, are there resources for parents to, um, kind of connect with the ways that math is being taught that might be different than the, you do the steps in an order like we had learned back when?
Yeah. Um, yes, there's definitely, um, I'd say there's a couple of different things. Number one, we know that we need better parent resources, um, to help with that. Um, we've done a number of parent nights in the last several years to also explain that. Um, and then there are some that, again, they, they say the Common Core. There are some that love the Common Core and say, "This is great. I wish they would've taught me math this way, because I can see how it's leading to a deeper understanding." And there are others that are saying, "When are we gonna throw out the Common Core and, and move to something else?" And that's not going to happen. Um, but both convincing students and parents that the way we're modeling math is really developing the brain, actually leading to further understanding, um, is a challenge because we've shifted towards this way that we're explaining math now. But it's what's valuable. It's, it's kind of like, um, you know, it's the 21st century. We've figured out that these basic calculations are no longer necessary, that it's really understanding, um, thinking that's what's important. Any other questions?
I'm gonna ask about the system that we use. I know there've been many systems brought in, the names of different book companies that have brought in for us to help to teach math. And this company that we have right now, it says 75 percent of what they need to know is in that book, and 25 percent we're looking outside. So are we sticking with what we have and just making it better within ourselves, or are we looking for another way?
Yep. So that's the next step, right? So that's what you, it's a perfect transition, is, is, so where do we go from here? So, um, what we do from here, um, is start to look at what is out there. And when we started the process, I told everybody, we are going to use, we are going to look at the most recent version of what we are using, and we're going to look at other things. Um, so we presently use Math &amp; Focus. They're on their fourth revision since the 2013 copyright that we have. There's a 2020 Math &amp; Focus that is out. They've done four revisions to try to get it better aligned to the Common Core. There are many other competitive products out there. We are going, right now, I've got about five or six. We are going to review many of them. Um, and we're gonna take some time to really dive in deep, to really look at, how does this help support English language learners? How does this support special education? How does this support the high-end learners? How does this support our parents? Um, and those are all things that we're just, we're just turning that page and literally on Monday are gonna start looking at some things. We've developed rubrics to evaluate them. We have two different rubrics that we will use to, as we start to look at these resources. Um, I've also had phone conversations with, um, Central Buck School District, State College School District, Tredafin Easton School District, um, I, we, uh, Lower Marion School District. So I've spoken to math directors from many of these places, and we will most likely go to visit some schools as well, differently from kindergarten through five and seven through, kindergarten through five or six, and seven through 12. We're also looking at, uh, a website called Ed Reports, uh, which is a nonprofit organization that ranks and rates textbooks. It's, it's funded predominantly by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, but many others. And they actually hire people who are mathematicians to review products and say whether it's aligned to the standards, and how rigorous it is, and how easy it is to use. Um, so that's a nice starting point to say, "Hey, other people have already looked at these products neutrally and said, 'It is aligned, and it is easy to use.'" Or, "You know what? They've already looked at this and said it isn't aligned. Maybe we shouldn't look there." There are some, um, the, the challenge is there are some products, like 2020 products, that haven't been reviewed by the website yet, so you've gotta do your own work. But we're looking at that as well to help guide our, um, process as we look at these new products.
And can I ask one more question?
Yep.
Um, we went to more focused learning in the elementary school, where we now have math and just, and, and language arts almost kind of separated. And I'm wondering how you feel about it? It's been two years now, I think. How's it worked? Are you feeling that it's successful? Will you be sticking with it?
Uh, well, we promised ourselves we would do it for a full two years before we made any decisions, because the first year is always, uh, an adjustment year, right? And you're sort of figuring out what are the bugs, um, and how do we address them. So we addressed, uh, some of the bugs that had occurred through, uh, particularly through scheduling of students, uh, for this year. We continue to evaluate it, so we'll be surveying teachers at the end of the year regarding it. Um, we have had, uh, anecdotally, information from teachers of math who have shared with us that they, they really are able to focus more on the professional development from the math aspect, and that that is making a very big difference for them being able to implement the things they are learning and then work with the coaches. From the English Language Arts standpoint, there are still some things to iron out. I mean, you're giving twice as many Funtis and Pennell benchmark assessments, right? Which is where you sit down with each kid for 20 minutes and figure out how well and to what degree is that child reading. Uh, and so there are, you know, some, some trade-offs. We're also looking at the social-emotional, uh, portion of it. So for some students, they're, they're switching, they have two different teachers, maybe, possibly, three different teachers. We try to narrow that down to very few students. And how does that allow them to connect with the particular classroom community, as well as with the particular teacher? So, um, I would say so far, we've had enough success that we are okay with moving forward as it is. I would never close the book on anything. I think you need to continue to evaluate it and, and just make sure it continues to meet our needs. And particularly, as we're gonna all learn how to teach math, perhaps with a new set of resources, we sort of have this in the back of our mind. We're training about half of the fourth and fifth grade elementary teachers to, to learn this math. What would it mean were we to ever go back? How would we then backfill the training for those other teachers? So we are considering that.
And that would be my next question about training teachers, because then we have to take a breath again and, and think, rethink how we're thinking about it.
Sure.
Thanks, Jen.
Uh, just as we look at resources, there is a, a movement in education for open education resources, and we are also looking at open education resources as we go through this process. Um, some of them are reviewed and vetted, and, and some are getting good reviews, and some are reviewed and vetted and not getting good reviews. Um, and again, that depends on K to five, six through 12, um, what devices do you have that can help implement this? What other tools do you have that might be able to help implement this? Um, but that is something we're also looking at as we look at our, all the resources that are offered.
I had two questions for you. My first question was about course offerings. So with the science curriculum, when you were talking about that at one of the previous meetings, um, there were some really exciting science courses coming out in the curriculum, specifically for high school. Are you thinking about new course offerings for the math curriculum? And if so, can you talk about it, or?
I can't. It's top secret. Actually, uh, the, in this process, the core curriculum is what we tackle first. There have been preliminary discussions around, um, what might be potential electives after we tackle the core curriculum. But I don't honestly want to get ahead of myself before we have more discussions internally and really, and really wrap our head around what is our core curriculum, and then we layer those on. It was the same in science. We came first with earth science, chemistry, biology, and physics, and then we layered on those other things that came towards the end.
My other question was about pairing courses. So when students are taking, um, like, an algebra course, um, are you also trying to pair that with other courses that they're taking at the same time? So algebra and economics go really well together. So, uh, economics would be the practical application of algebra, or calculus and physics at the same time. Is that something you're trying to do to sort of increase that practical application of math?
We, we certainly advertise it and recommend it. We don't offer economics as a, as a course that's supplemental to the ninth-grade algebra, but it does, we do use algebra in our intro engineering course. Um, and my ninth-grade math and science teachers do actually collaborate. They've talked a lot about how to use common terminology and common expressions, um, so that the kids don't look at them funny when they start using T for time instead of X for time, or they're using 9.8 meters per second squared instead of 32 feet per second squared for, for, um, for the two different systems. And at least they, they have those conversations and then present them to the students. Um, calculus and, and physics is absolutely aligned. And again, the kids know, um, generally, their co-requisits or prerequisites to have calculus before you're in the calc-based physics class. Um, so we try to do that when we, when we can and have those inner, those, those discussions amongst the two different departments.
Thank you.
That's it.
Well, for Jeff. Don't everybody get excited. Okay, uh, shall we have a, a quick brain break? Remember those brain breaks? Okay, indulge me two seconds. Elementary principals, you guys did this already. If you are interested in, in participating, I invite you to have a quick brain break by putting both hands out, uh, in front of you.
Macarena.
Yeah, doing the macar- almost. Cross your right over your left. I don't know if Anna should stop filming now, but, uh, we won't put any music behind it, so it doesn't look like we're dancing. Try, if you can, to make your left hand go in a clockwise motion, and your right hand go in a counterclockwise motion at the same time.
Look at you.
Okay? See if you can do it. Once you get there, if you can, try going the other way with both hands. See if you can go the other way. Okay, now, if you're ready for the super challenge, try and go up and down with one hand, and side to side with the other hand at the same time. Yes. Hey, macarena. Okay. Uh, so thank you. That's our, our quick brain break. To help us refocus, we cross the midline, which makes some connections, right? Um, and that's a kind of energizing activity that can be done quickly by our teachers with our students to help us focus. Uh, so just very briefly, uh, as a part of our, we, we completed our English Language Arts audit, oh goodness, way back in 2017, we were completed with the, with the process. But that doesn't mean we ever just sort of leave something and stop discussing what is best for students or what's working for us right now. So as part of some of our English Language Arts work, particularly in conjunction with what we continue to learn through our basis work, our belonging and sociocultural identity in schools work, we really are starting to take a closer look at some of our novels and text selections from that lens. Um, you know, in our initial process, we fill out the rubrics, we look at everything. Now we've had a chance to sort of teach all of those things, and we have a little bit more space to think through some really specific novels, uh, and choices. So we've identified an initial process, you know, anytime you do something, you do it once, and then you say, "What didn't work about that?" and change it. Uh, but initially, we are, uh, selecting any novels that come up as, maybe this is something we want to look at from a basis, uh, perspective. Uh, we survey, how do local districts handle that? And what grade do they teach that? Do they teach that? How long have they taught it? That kind of thing. Uh, we look through a research. What is recommended? Who else in other states is teaching it? Um, what, what, are there any scholarly articles about the benefits of teaching it? What does the literary criticism say? Um, we have a consultant, our Sage Wellness Consultant, who you've heard us speak about before, Dr. Tara Doty. Uh, she has a team who is very able to, uh, read and, and work with us on looking at books through the lens of equity and social justice. And so, um, she and her team can work with us not only to meet with teachers initially to gain what their understanding of the text is and where they are in their understanding of those areas of social justice, uh, but also to help con- conduct surveys, to get some really individual information from teachers about their approaches, uh, come in and conduct observations as we're teaching this text. What is it, you know, what are the students doing? How are they engaging? If it comes to, uh, be appropriate, we could have focus groups with students. You know, what was your experience while in the room, learning this particular novel, talking with families, parents, guardians? Taking all of that information into account so that we can then come up with a recommendation and action plan. Do we continue to teach a novel as we have? Do we supplement it if there's, let's say there's a controversy about teaching the novel? Do we teach the controversy? Do we think, "Oh, this is actually better for older students. Let's move it up to a high school level." Do we say, "You know what? Let's take a break from this book. Let's try teaching this other book and see if we can accomplish the same things," and then come back and reevaluate? So we just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we will be taking a specific look at some, some novels and some texts in that manner, and that we have a process, and that we're committed to that process, because we feel like it is us doing our due diligence, um, and not just lip service to the basis work, but, uh, to really, uh, be accurate in our self-examination.
Oh, and Jeff's back.
Aha, you thought you were done, but you have one more.
So physical education and health, we've also gone through, um, and really done some background reading, looked at the standards, and looked at how, and sort of backmapped how does our program line up with the standards. Um, we are in the process of thinking about what type of survey, uh, could be created and generated, um, and then we'll start looking at some of that information, as well as some data associated with it.
All right. I think it's me. There we go. Um, world language is moving right along. Uh, they are continuing their audit. We are continuing our audit. Um, and that, that audit team includes all world language teachers at the middle school and the high school. So it's not just select teachers. We've been able to do that work during their department meetings, um, and so they've all been able to collaborate across the buildings, which is nice. So the Spanish teachers from the middle school and the high school are talking to each other, et cetera. So there's a lot of collaboration going on. We've done a lot of background reading, um, to prepare for our audit team. We've been looking at, uh, the actful standards and trying to figure out, you know, does the curriculum that we're teaching fulfill those different standards? Um, they are looking out, um, beyond the district and looking at what is best practice saying about how we should be teaching world languages. Uh, we're starting to do our gap analysis and see where are there some, are there some gaps and some holes. Uh, and they actually are also starting to look at some resources, because, um, we, in some cases, we're doing really well with resources, and in other cases, they're saying, you know, these other resources are going to meet our needs a little bit better. So some of the things we have to still do is to create some surveys to send to students and parents. Um, we want to then analyze those results. We want to look at our test results, our enrollment, and the student interest in the different courses, and then we'll make a recommendation, and we'll come back to you to tell you more. Okay?
Could you speak a little bit more about the valuation in, um, math? For example, there's a lot of testing that happens in that subject area. What does an assessment of a world language look like when it, when it doesn't have the same, um, core curriculum or, um, state testing?
Yeah. So, um, they're, they're ta- you know, they're testing all the different things of the content that they are teaching. Um, they're trying to figure out whether or not the students understand the vocabulary, whether or not they're able to apply that into some, um, context and text. Um, and then we also are going to the level of, um, greater testing than that.
And then we also are going to the level of greater testing than that. So AP is where it's appropriate, if they're taking the AP exam, that kind of thing. They also have, each language has its own association, and we have students who actually sign up to take a test, if you can imagine. And so what we look at to determine how well our students are accomplishing what they should be when it comes to world language is ultimately, are they getting threes and fours on the AP? Are those who are signing up for this test getting the silver, gold? And by the way, yes, they are. Everybody is doing really well. As well as some other factors that are non-assessment based, including looking at our, we have honor societies in our languages now. We have participation in world language clubs. So like, how well are we reaching out in all of these ways so that our students are not only learning the language, but then part of the goal of that is learning the culture and immersing themselves? And that's another exciting part to look at as part of this audit. Anyone else? Okay. There you go. Okay, so we thank you, we thank the board for its commitment to this process. It takes a lot of time and energy on the part of our teachers, and it is really so well-coordinated by the two people who you've seen present tonight. I cannot emphasize enough how much work and preparation and energy they put into doing this and doing justice to the work. I am proud to stand up here every time and hear about all the things that they have learned as a team, what they are able to do when they're listening to the teachers, and how they're able to share back with the teachers so that the teachers themselves can make decisions about what our students will be learning and how they will be teaching them. You know, our goal is to get students who are prepared not only for today's jobs, but for the jobs of the future. And I have a quote up here from a recent, well, relatively recent, 2017 article in one of our education publications that said, "The experts best guess about the combination of traits that will guarantee a rewarding employment in tomorrow's economy: elite-level technical abilities, the probing mind of a scientist, and a deft human touch." And I believe you've heard a little bit tonight about our work to that end. And we would like to thank you all for your support in that work and to thank all the teachers for their participation, as well as the administrators in it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Well, thank you all very much for your presentation, and please pass along thanks to all the members of the audit teams.
Thanks.
Bob, I think I did it.
Our next item is revisions to the 2020-2021 calendar. Ms. Saxa.
Okay, so that's me again, but I can sit down for this one. We just have two minor revisions that we are hoping that you will consider this evening. Number one is our induction program. Originally, it appeared on the calendar as August 24th only, which is the Monday before all the teachers return. That had actually been a change in the past. We'd had several days of induction, but because of the change of the structure of our school year for all teachers, we had tried to reduce that number to just one day of induction in the school year, and then more after-school induction programs. So we did that, and it didn't go over as well as we wanted it to. It was really, it turned out that that extra commitment that we were asking of people during their time here was really a little overwhelming for them. So we would like to go back and front-load the induction, get all that done in three days, and then they have more of the time to themselves once the school year starts and they can work with the mentors. So that's really just an adjustment based on the feedback from them. And then another adjustment that we are proposing this evening takes us to the week before Thanksgiving. Typically, the three days before Thanksgiving break are elementary and middle school conferences, and the high school has had regular days, all three of those days. Well, what we believe that if we were to give the students an early dismissal on that Wednesday before the break, we could not only accommodate those families who, if you could have seen the stack of absence notes, would prefer that their children stay home on that date for travel or for whatever purposes, but also it gives us an additional opportunity for professional development, like smack in the middle of a semester, which is a really great time for teachers to have to get together and look at data and look at what is happening so far and make some decisions for the rest of the semester. It also would take our high school to have the same number of early dismissal days as our elementary and our middle schools, and, you know, not that we have to have exactly everything, but it's kind of nice that it does that as well.
Questions or comments from the board?
I was just gonna say, this is probably a good time to do another public service announcement about the start date coming up in August 2020, which is August 31, starting before Labor Day. So we should just kind of keep that in people's minds as they're planning summer vacations here in the middle of winter and are thinking about the start of a new school year.
Thank you.
So for all the folks who are gonna say, nobody told us, here's another opportunity for you to not hear us. Okay, moving right along.
Now the exciting part of the meeting, huh?
Pre-legal preliminary budget.
Tonight, we're showing the first look at the 2020-21 budget. This is a preliminary budget. The preliminary budget will be approved at the next board meeting. There's three approvals for the, each year for the budget, and that's a preliminary budget. There are proposed final budget and the final budget, which is in June, and it usually changes significantly from this point to then. We use a site-based, bottom-up type of budget, meaning that different departments and schools provide budgets, parts of the budget, and we get the information from payroll, NHR on salaries and benefits. And we also get information from our financial advisor on debt service, and we accumulate all these pieces of the budget. And usually when we provide the first look, it is kind of, it's a little bit loaded up and a little bit higher than what it turns out to be in June, but at any rate, we have to have a starting point, and then this is it. When we created the budget, we had assumptions. The Act One index, which is a required ceiling for districts, is 2.6% for our tax increase. We are allowed Act One special ed exceptions and a couple other exceptions which we weren't eligible for, but with the special ed exception, we are able to increase our taxes by 3.25%, which in this particular budget, we actually are planning on going up 3.25%. Another assumption that we have in the budget is the first look medical prescription. Our medical and prescription is through a consortium with Delaware County, and we're with all the other school districts, and it's a pretty low number, 2%, because we've done well with our claims over the last few years, and we developed actually a fund balance in the trust for the consortium. So we're drawing down a little bit on that. So our increase normally would be like 5, 6, 7, 8%, but probably this year and maybe next year it will be low. So PSCRS is employer rate of contribution, 34.51%. We receive half of that back on the revenue side as a subsidy. So really, the net effect is half of that, but it's still 34.51% of every dollar that we pay on salary. We have a one-time expenditure for textbooks in the budget, $662,000. I'm making note of that because that line item normally is around $600,000 for books, and it's up over $1.2 million, but in the following year, it'll be back down to the normal $600,000. So it's not something that we're gonna go up and then sit there at that higher level. So in this budget, we have three and a half elementary teaching positions, additional four secondary teaching positions, one secondary psychologist, one network administrator, and one HR manager. If you look at the budget summary, the revenues up there are prior to any tax increase. They're at $129 million. The expenditures are at $134,600,000. The net effect is a shortfall of $5.5 million. If we increase our taxes at 3.25%, with the exception, it brings in $3,192,000. That leaves a shortfall of $2,356,000 that we have to look at and try to reduce our expenditure side in order to break even with the budget. The effect of that is an increase of 1.0572 mils. Our new mileage will be 33.5877, and what that increase equates to for the average taxpayer is an increase of $176 to their tax bill. If you look at the revenue side of the budget, you can see that 81% of the budget is local. So unlike some other districts, they might be reversed if their aid ratio is their poor district. They might have 60, 70, 80% of their revenue come from the state and federal government, but 80% of ours comes from tax revenue and other related taxes, interest earnings and real estate transfer taxes. And out of the $132 million, 101 million of it comes out of, from real estate taxes, which is a huge percentage. State revenue is $23,677,000, and federal funds like Title I and so forth is $1,480,000.
You show that budget, you show the federal sources dropping in the next budget year. Can you explain why?
Correct. We did do a bond issue with Build America bonds a few years ago, and we refinanced those bonds. The Build America bonds gave you a subsidy back of about $370,000. So once we refinanced it with a regular bond issue and saved money, that way the subsidy disappeared. So that just, I mean, the net effect is our, you know, still, you know, huge gain in our refinancing, and it took into consideration that subsidy. But on the revenue side, we lost $370,000 in revenue. So this might be a little hard to see, but it's hard to get a lot of numbers in small area, but the 2021 budget is $134 million, and as you can see, it's about a 4.8 to 4.9% increase over the prior year's budget. I have two actual, I mean, one actual and two budgets. The 1920 budget is a comparison to the 2020-21 budget, and probably the next time I do an update, I'll have an estimate of the 2019-20 budget and how that's gonna come in compared to budget, but right now, we're comparing budget to budget. As you can see, the yellow areas are where the larger increases are. The salaries are going up almost $2.5 million. The benefits are going up $1.6 million. Contracted services is going down $400,000, but that's really because we were doing a reclassification of some of the accounts into appropriate accounts. They weren't, they've changed the way the accounts are structured. Utilities and maintenance is up $200,000. Purchased services, which includes tuition and also VOTEC and the payment that we make to the Delaware County Community College, that's all $900,000 increase in the budget. Supplies are up $548,000, and those are different types of areas. That covers the books that I talked about, the one-time expenditure for books. Equipment is up $160,000, and dues and fees is up $30,000. And then the debt service, which is starting to kick in for the capital project, as we borrowed $34 million this year towards the construction project, is kicking in at almost $690,000. So the cost drivers, as you can see, we're going up $6.2 million, and these six items really are most of what, where the increase is. The salaries are, like I said, are up $2.5 million. The medical and prescription is going up $515,000. That is not, that is a 2% increase, but it's also the additional staffing has, you have to add the hospitalization, the medical and prescription for all the new employees. Retirement is up $968,000. Half of that we're getting back on the revenue side. And then the addition in the textbook area is $662,000 because of the one-time increase or purchase in textbooks. Tuition and IU services is up $386,000, so that's the IU services that are provided. Also, all the various special ed tuitions that there are, are up $386,000. And then debt service, because of the capital plan, is up $687,000. So that's almost $5.7 million of the $6.2 million in increase. With a 3.25% increase in 2020-21, if you look at the six-year average, we're not doing too bad. The average increase is 2.67. I think the prior, at least the prior four or five years, we've gone at Act One index. So that, you know, it's really been an effort to keep, you know, taxes down and only, you know, only increase what we need to operate the, you know, the program. So when I increased this to 10 years, it was up at 3.22%. So that had, I think, one year and maybe 10 years ago, that was a little higher, but the rest of the years have been all in twos and threes, and it's actually, you know, pretty good, so.
Can you speak to how the Act One index is determined and, like, except by the state? And what time of year do we get?
Yeah, it's a combination of two indexes. One is like the statewide average wage, and the other one is like a CPI. And they take the two and average them out, and every year, we receive that Act One index in September from the state. And sometimes you kind of wonder how it goes in the directions it went, because I think we were, when I got here, we were what, probably at 2.8, then we went down to 2.4, and now we're back at 2.6. I don't know, you know, but it's hovering around that, and that's, you know, that would be your ceiling if you didn't have any exceptions. So that would be as high as you could go for a tax increase. But we are eligible for the special ed exception because the special ed exception is, it takes your historic information from 2017, 18 for special ed, and the historic information for 2018, 19 for special ed, and it'll take the 17, 18 information, then apply the index of 2.6 to that, and then compare it to, and everything over that, you know, on the 18, 19, compared to the 17, 18, everything over that, you get to increase your taxes by that. And it just so happened that the 2018, 19 special ed costs minus the 17, 18 with a 2.6% increase was at an increase of $625,000, which equates to the difference between, you know, gives you the 3.25% difference between that and 2.6. So that's where we're at, and assuming we go forward with the, and you approve the preliminary budget with the, with the exception, then that would be our ceiling, 3.25%. That's as high as we could go for taxes. In the general fund budget, we have $300,000 for general fund special maintenance. Couple years ago, we talked, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years because our fund balance has been growing a little bit, and we have, it's more of an unwritten policy, but we agreed that everything over 8% of expenditures, if the fund balance got over that, it would be put into a capital, fund balance, committed capital. We currently have $4.3 million in that. And then we also have the bond proceeds. And then we also have the bond proceeds. The bond proceeds, you sell bonds and then you build Linwood. We do renovations to the high school, Chatham Park and Cooper Town. We'll have climate control and a new roof at Cooper Town. And that will come with, through bond proceeds, but the debt service in the, in the general fund is what makes the payments on the, on the bonds that we, we have to pay back. So that's, they're all part of the budget and they're all connected to the budget. We kind of broke that out because the general fund special maintenance is all small maintenance projects like concrete doors, lighting, those little things that aren't large dollar amounts, but need to be done. The fund balance committed capital is more like mid-grade projects. It might, you might look at, for instance, the track around the high school needs to be replaced. That's could be, you know, 6, 700,000 or so. So you're not going to borrow money over 30 years to put a track in because useful life might be, you know, 15 or 20 years. But, and then the bond proceeds is for bigger projects. But they're all tied into the general fund and how the general fund operates. The budget calendar, as I said, this is our first look at the preliminary budget. January 23rd, we'll adopt the proposed preliminary budget and we have to send that to the state. Then April 23rd, at the board meeting, we'll adopt the proposed final budget, which between the 23rd of January and April 23rd, we'll be looking through everything. We'll be getting information on the state's budget and what they're going to provide us for subsidies. And we'll be looking at a lot of different things. A lot of things will become clearer and, and we'll have a much different budget in April, hopefully. And we'll get the shortfall down. And then on June 4th, we'll adopt the final budget.
Questions from the board?
Really quick question. The salary and benefits number for the upcoming budget, that was based only on the new hires that you listed, but not on retirement. Is that correct? So it assumed no retirements?
We didn't reflect any retirements. Those, because you'd get closer to adoption of the proposed final, the final budget and then you'd probably, you know, find out how many people are retiring. And then that would, you know, that would be a big help in reducing the shortfall.
Other questions from the board? If the public's interested, are the preliminary budget numbers up on our website or will they be?
Well, we'll put this on.
Presentation.
Yeah. This is much clearer than, there's also what they call PDE 2028, which is a state form, which is like Chinese. So you, you can't.
That's where they take the numbers and put them in a fashion where nobody can understand.
Yeah. They're used for their, their, they take that numbers and then they accumulate with all the other school districts' numbers when they put together their information. So it's really not in a format that really you can understand well.
Yeah. But this information is.
But this information would be on the.
Right. As part of the.
I think it's safe to say that fiscal management and responsibility here is a serious issue not taken lightly. For the benefit of the public, Bob, can you tell us how many of these budgets you've prepared in your career?
34, I guess.
Have a lot of experience.
My first one was in, I hate to say it, but I think it was the 89-90 budget. And, yeah. And I worked at districts with $200 million budgets to.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
Yeah. So, you know, I worked at a larger district with about a $200 million budget. So, yeah. And we will be doing probably a three-year projection each year. I said when we started the business, the capital program, that I would do a three-year budget every year to a projection for the next two years so that we know that what we're doing is going to carry over into the next years. Because when you're doing a capital program, if you don't do those extra years and then you don't know where you're going to end up. And a lot of times you see where districts go into a capital plan or something and then all of a sudden they have a huge tax increase in one year that, you know, throws everybody for a loop. So.
Well, thank you to you and Brian and the rest of your staff for doing such a great job maintaining fiscal management responsibility and giving us a great-looking budget.
Okay. I was only 15 when I did the 89 budget.
Thanks, Bob. The next item on our agenda is some brief remarks from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I just want to remind folks that we are engaged in the strategic planning process and the next phase of that process involves community and parent surveys, which will be sent out electronically on Monday, the 13th. So that will go out to everyone. We'll ask folks to please participate in those surveys by the date of February 7th. That will be the deadline for completion of the surveys. If parents have children in more than one school, they are invited to complete the survey for elementary, middle, high school. We do have three different surveys for, for parents to be reflective of those levels. And just as a reminder, our, this strategic planning process is, is not focused upon facility work and budgetary work. It's really focused upon envisioning the experience that we want the children in our school system to have as they progress from kindergarten through the time that they graduate from us. So we're really asking people to think about what types of experiences we'd like our kids to have as they're learning. So, that was it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And moving on to the really exciting part of the evening. This next item is for information purposes only. Secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, the proof of publication as it relates to the intent to approve the proposed preliminary budget and referendum exception notice. Next item, budget transfers. I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $66,853.29.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is this a roll call vote?
Yeah, roll call.
Sorry. Roll call, please.
Dr. Crispin?
Aye.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Cento?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Weedman?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes, nine voting yes. Thanks, Bob.
Sorry, is it too late for a question?
Go for it.
What does registration and dues?
That's you, Jen.
No, that's me. So that is actually to correct $15,000, which was put in the wrong category for technology. And this particular set of registration and dues are for teachers as well as students to become members of PMEA, which is the Music Resource, the Music Education Association, which enables them not only to participate in professional development, but also to participate in the choral and instrumental competitions which occur throughout.
Good catch. Thanks for fixing.
Sure.
Was that picked up in the audit?
We thought that that was worded awkwardly as well. So.
PDE to blame?
Yeah. I wish.
Thank you. And next item, I'll accept a motion to approve disbursements from the general fund totaling
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the new Linwood Elementary School project architect, KCBA and Associates, Inc., and our owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., and authorize change orders as listed. And the listed item is for $10,389. Motion?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the retirement as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the leaves of absence as listed.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to accept the recommendation of special counsel and authorize settlement of pending Special Education Administrative proceeding 1-59621 for privately obtained legitimate education expenses for the period of 9/1/19 through 8/31/2020 and 9/1/20 through 8/31/2021 in an amount not to exceed $104,000.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
That's two years of tuition?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the revisions to the 2020-21 school calendar as discussed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
I just, it occurred to me, so we're adding days to the beginning of the year for teachers and it's because that's what they wanted?
When you put that way.
Well, so.
Doesn't sound right. It's only for new teachers?
New teachers, right.
And it's in the contract that they have for additional days of induction. We traditionally have had them as add-ons to the beginning of the year. We try to integrate them throughout the school year and yes, the feedback was that was overwhelming. Better to have it all at once in the beginning of the year.
Right. I guess my point was this was, this is a positive move that our new teachers are, you know, had asked for.
It is. And we will be sure to tell the new, new teachers that the last new teacher.
Perfect.
And induction is required for all teachers new to the district per PDE.
So induction orientation is required to all teachers who are new to the district as part of our approved induction plan. We do hire a lot of teachers who are experienced and have already completed induction elsewhere. We require them to attend orientation anyway because that's about how we do business here. But they are not required to attend the sessions throughout the school year if they've already completed another induction session.
Any other questions or comments? Did we vote?
No.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the student excursion as listed.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Any discussion?
That sounds fun.
Mr. Dunning is not nodding north and south when he's.
You got one? You a skier?
I'm a tuber.
Well, I hope they enjoy it.
That's Camelback.
Blue Mountain.
Blue Mountain.
Oh, the tubing.
Oh. Go a different place.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Board reports. Steve?
Well, based on the time, actually, I'll just say no report. Close to nine o'clock.
Do you know where your children are? Okay, no report.
I just wanted to pass on a quick appreciation of a community member. I was at the Grange Estate for their historical tours and there were high school students from, I believe it was the Interact Club and FLBA, who had helped decorate a tree and were giving some of the historical tours and got rave reviews that I wanted to pass on.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to say thank you. I don't want to be rude. Thank you to the students of Havreford Township for their appreciation and recognition of board members and for this adorable lapel pin that I will find a place to display. And I will add this succulent to my garden. So, thank you.
If I may, actually, I'd do the same thing. I forgot about that as well, but I was trying to be mindful of everybody's time. But yes, thank you very much.
I just want to say, so in between now and our next board meeting is Martin Luther King Day. And I know a lot of the schools, the PTO organizations put on a service project. I want to thank the PTOs for that. We go every year and they've been really valuable. So I just also want to let the community know, there's a lot of service projects that go on that day and I hope that everyone has an opportunity to participate in one of them.
Thanks. Seattle? No report.
Went to the Chatham Park PTO meeting this week and was really excited and pleased to learn that Dr. Whitehead is empowering his students who have started a newspaper, which is a really cool thing. So if you want to check it out, I believe it's also available digitally on the Chatham Park Elementary School website. Sounds like it'd be a good source of information. I do have a public service announcement. Increasingly concerned about the way parents cross their kids at Cooper Town Elementary School. We, the district provides a crossing guard. Do not use Cooper Town Road. Go to the crossing guard. It's just not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you for the plant and for the recognition. I appreciate it. Other than that, no report?
Susan?
Thank you for the plant. I had an experience yesterday. My son, who graduated from Havreford in 2008 or '09, I never get it right, now teaches at another district. He's a health and phys ed teacher, another district. It will be nameless. I'll just tell you the initials are TE. And he, he brought his eighth grade team yesterday. He's the eighth grade coach for one of their middle schools. And he brought them into our middle school to play. And honestly, he couldn't stop talking about it the whole night. He couldn't believe how many kids were there, how excited they were. And I, he and I had a conversation. He's studying instructional leadership, so we talked about it and I told him, it's all about Mr. Haran right there. There he was, standing at the door. Everybody knew he was there. The kids were well-behaved, happy. Everything about it was just really, every time, one of the people in my family, the other one will remain nameless as all, as also, but every time they talk about another school district, they come back and tell me about the high school or the middle school, how great the opportunities for these kids, the energy, the happiness, the good sports, everything about it. I'm sorry to say Jake won, but they played a great game and it was a lot of fun. So thank you, Mr. Haran especially. It was a great night.
In terms of the PTOs, annually, the board tries to get out and visit each of the PTOs and Ms. Weedman's been coordinating that. So thank you this year. And I thought we had a good meeting at Chatham the other night. Next week, we have IDC.
IDC on Monday.
Monday and middle school on Wednesday. So that, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
One of those days. So that's good.
Make Foundation Wednesday.
So my wife won't have to look at me for a couple more days. So that's good. Legislatively, for the most part, they've been on a break, but things are going to start to heat up now in Harrisburg. There's a cyber charter bill that is getting a hearing by the House Education Committee on the 21st and we're looking forward to hearing the details of that. It sounds like it would, it would require all school districts to establish cyber programs, but offer multiple options, which could include an in-house program or contracting with other providers, including the existing cyber charter schools. And that, if I understood correctly, the existing cyber charter schools as they exist now would cease to exist. So chances of that happening are probably slim and none, but this, this is, this bill is the chairman of the committee's bill, so it'll certainly get a hearing and we're very interested in that. We're over 300,000.
About 300.
300,000 on cyber charter tuition this year. So I'll be curious to see where that goes. Our next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on January 23rd, 2020 in the board conference room in the Oakmont Administration Building. Also want to say that they topped out the steal at Linwood this week. It was pretty awesome. If you haven't been down Lawrence Road, you ought to take a field trip. It's just, it's great to see that, you know, that thing is in the field now. It's not just something that was on paper. So, and the weather's been good.
Board met in executive session prior to the public meeting to have an opportunity to review personnel issues, including appointments, retirements, and leaves of absence. The board also reviewed certain tax assessment appeal litigation pending in the Court of Common pleas of Delaware County. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Thank you, everybody.